Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of October 22nd, the Advisory Committee to order. At this time, if we could do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome everyone this evening. We do have four members here, so we do have a quorum for our meeting. I do anticipate at some point will will probably be joining us and we do, as everyone else still have two vacancies if anyone is looking to join the Advisory Committee. First thing on the next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the last meeting. Deb had sent those out as everyone had a chance to look them over. Anyone notice anything that they'd like changed? Okay.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of October 2nd, I think it was, or 1st.
Okay.
The first, right? Yeah, it's the first.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Do we have any discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing none. I'll do a roll call. Amy?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Okay, we'll keep moving down the agenda until we hit 6:45. At 6:45, we have the posted pre-town meeting to review the articles from the for the upcoming fall town meeting warrant, so. Next on the agenda is the Accountant Screening Committee. I'd sent out an email, the town looking for someone to do that, be a member of the Committee, Screening Committee, for the new accountant's position. I did receive back interest from Tony. Brought up at the meeting, so we're bringing it up tonight. Tony?
Yeah, I would be willing to do that.
Okay, great, great. I'll accept, unless anyone else is interested in doing it. I'll accept the motion for Tony to be the Advisory Board Committee member on the Accountant Screening Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Anything on the chat, Deb? No? Okay. Are, do a vote. Amy?
Yeah.
Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Okay. I appreciate stepping up, Tony, and helping out.
No problem.
The next on the, we have on the agenda is the capital planning update. Capital Planning, Ed Matt, Adam, sent out a email to the department heads with a schedule coming up for the capital planning process. We're looking at department reviews. We'll be starting on November 4th, the 9th, and the 18th, various departments. We were able, Holly was able to help us tremendously, I feel, and us put all the forms into a fillable form so that everything we received from the departments will be typed in, which will be nice to be able to read them all. I think it'll help with our organizing the our plans and that. We will go to 9th and 16th in December for our recommendations. Then we will go to submitting the report in January 21st with the presentation from the Capital Planning Committee. I believe that's the Select Board, Adam, if I'm correct.
You are correct.
On January 27th. Those are the target dates. We will be receiving them in. There had been some question, I know at the last planning, it was Planning Board meeting on the light department's project. On if it had gone to capital planning on the chat. As far as I know, it had not. I do know that I'm unsure if they are also going to submit the form. I know that the money's come totally separate, although I don't know what the, I don't believe the exact bylaw says. I don't think it makes a difference on the funding, but if that's a project that's needed to be done immediately, I don't think if they sent the form in, I don't see an issue with we would, I'm sure, call a meeting, special meeting just for that one thing, if that does need to be done this fall for some reason that it needs to be done immediately. That would be their decision to show it to us as far as that goes, as far as the bylaw goes. I don't know if anyone has any opinion on that, but I certainly don't see an issue with them coming forward. There's always been various questions and doesn't really make a difference if you're on which side you're on, on the town entities. I think they do a fantastic job, so I see no problem with a form coming forward and certainly acting on it expeditiously when it comes to that. On the capital planning process? Anything on the chat, Deb?
Nope, Terry's watching and she just said Justice Graves was sworn in today for CP.
Okay, excellent. So like that committee, I believe, only has one open spot now remaining, I believe.
We do have one more spot available, an at-large spot.
Okay, so if anyone watching is interested, please feel free to, I guess, send Adam an email or Holly and we'll move forward with that. Next. Yep, we still got a few more minutes before we go into the special town meeting. Pre-town meeting, sorry. Using the end of the fiscal budget versus actual for the budget planning process. I did have, last meeting, we had talked about requesting from department heads on any account that wasn't spent, at least 90% of it spent to work with the department heads on tightening up the budget so that if money's needed elsewhere, that they're not ending up with 50% of their budget remaining. Started looking at the budget versus actuals and I think the 90% number that we set is a little little high, only because a lot of these, we're going to see a lot of accounts, some of the accounts are only $100, $500 accounts and if they weren't spent, 90% of it was, we're going to be having a lot of small accounts and small numbers. I did kind of run it by Adam a little bit and we had talked, him and I had talked about the possibility of using this, what we're looking to do in the upcoming budget process as part of it. We would be getting the information to the Advisory Committee so we can ask the department heads to better identify where those funds should have been spent, but at the same time, they'd be using it as part of their budget process. If I'm describing that correctly, Adam, on what we had talked about?
Yeah, that it's accurate and I do feel that's, that's a request that should be obviously discussed and that would be an opportunity for me to sit down with the department heads and ask those questions in the review process, but also provide some feedback. And as you know, they, all the department heads will come before the Select Board and the Advisory Committee, so therefore we could have that dialogue, Mr. Chairman.
No, I think, I think it would be important for the department heads to send us something in there to ahead of time prior to when they come in, so we have it in front of us so we can review it, but I don't think that would be an issue at that point. Tony, I know you had made the motion on 90%. What's your opinion on using this as part of the budget process to help the department heads and help us, or?
Well, I think we should and like you said, I think there are going to be those odd ones where it's a very small account and relatively not spent, so it's going to hit that 90% threshold. So I'm not really concerned about those. It's those accounts that are, you know, fairly substantial in size. I guess, you know, do we set a threshold of $1,000 or or we even go down to, you know, less, maybe it's only 85 or 80%. However, however. But I do think that it's a useful tool. If they can tell us, okay, you know, I didn't spend in this account because of this, and of course, to me, if it's directly COVID-related, then I don't want to say they get a pass, but that, that gives an excuse, but if there's not a good reason, then that certainly starts the conversation of, was it too much?
Okay, I definitely agree too, that I think it is going to be a good tool. And maybe we don't have to necessarily set a threshold. We can go through it and look at ones that we want to identify that we do want to bring forward. It may not, just because somebody's only spent 70%, maybe, you know, we look at it and we know that it's an account that every year is unknown. I mean, sometimes certain salaries are unknown on on-call of force wardens or tree services or it's hard to tell sometimes. I think a lot of these accounts, we would be, I don't want to, I don't want to say wasting our time, but we don't want to not focus on the ones, like you said, Tony, that could be sizable enough to where they really make a difference, but not granted, every dollar matters nowadays, but.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say, I mean, if the committee wants, I think that would be appropriate if the committee identifies certain accounts, I could get that information to you on those accounts. I have no problem with that.
Okay. Welcome, Will. I see you in now. Amy, did you have anything that you wanted to add on that, on the, using that fiscal, the budget versus actual and as part of the budget planning process, or?
I think it's a good idea. I just made a little note that I'll go through and sort of pick out the ones that I would like to hear more about and I'll get that to you. So it's just more helpful for Adam if we have some direction with that.
Right.
Rather than just like, everybody, like, we can detail it down for them.
Right, I think, I think if we go through and we're each going to have different ones, I'm sure that we identify and we may have ones that we know that every year are well way over or way under and we, you know, want to address them, so I think that'll be a good combination to get to Adam so that we can have that information and the department head can too, because they may not realize, you know, I'm sure they realize, but they may not really have thought about why their accounts underspent or overspent every year. They're just happy that they didn't go over the number and you continue to the next year. So this might be helpful for them also. Deb, did you have anything to add onto that?
No, I agree with what everybody's saying and, you know, I kind of go back to if we're going to build something into the next fiscal year, having that that spend plan, and it doesn't necessarily need to be this huge detailed document of where you're going to spend every single penny, but if you have those, you know, if departments have bigger purchases, you know, knowing that they're making them towards the end of the fiscal year helps, so we know that that money is, you know, slated for something, so we're not constantly asking why there's so much money left in the account. So just knowing what, what their plans are, I think, would help, but that's all.
All right, anyone have anything else? Will's disappeared now. Must be having internet issues at this point. Okay, at this point, I'd like to suspend our regular meeting, and if we have a, need to make a motion on that.
We do. Make a motion to I forget if we adjourn it. But.
You can suspend it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to suspend the Advisory Committee meeting to go into the pre-town meeting.
A second.
Okay, roll call vote. Amy?
Yeah.
Tony?
Yep, yes.
Yeah.
Will, are you on? Will, are you on now? I must still be having issues at this point, and I'm a yes, so we will suspend our meeting and now go into the pre-town meeting. At this point, I'd like to call to order the pre-town meeting, the town of Templeton Fall Town Meeting Warrant. The town meeting dated October 26, 2020. Deb, Deb's going to share the document on the screen and we'll go down the articles and make our recommendations. Adam, at the, once we're done with all our recommendations, we'll get you a copy so that you can have them for an insert for the Voters Guide at a Fall Town Meeting, if that's okay.
That'd be great, because we're getting the Voters Guide printed right now, so by having that separate sheet, if you will, will be helpful. That way we can have it right in either in the Voters Guide or on the side of, next to the Voters Guide.
Okay. All right, Article 1 is Payment of Late Bills. See if the town votes authorize payment of late bills from prior fiscal years for the FY 2020 budgets, the following departments and amounts, Highway Department 12128 and Town Clerk 8781. This is an article that most Fall Town Meetings do have some type of late bills that came in from a previous fiscal year. I know that it's very common that either a vendor didn't get a bill, something got mixed up and not sent out, and I certainly know that we need to get our bills paid, whether it's a prior year or not, if we owed the vendors the money, they should be paid their amounts, so. I don't know if anyone has any, anything they'd like to say on this article? All right, hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Amy?
I vote in favor.
Okay, so we got to make a, so I'll make, I'll make a motion that the Advisory Committee votes in favor or for, for the affirmative of this. I forget the word we use.
Recommend the yes vote.
Yeah, thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we recommend a yes vote on Article 1.
Have a second?
A second.
Okay, do we have any discussion or anything on the chat, Deb, at this point?
We do not at this point.
Okay. Go through. Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, second article is Consent Agenda Held Over From The 2020 Annual Town Meeting. See if the town will vote to approve a consent agenda consisting of the following non-controversial actions, or take any action relative there to items, maybe voted a single block or any combination. We have the reports of town officers and reports of town committees. We, I know at town, annual town meeting, we had spoke up that we would put these off until now in order to allow people to not only review the book, but for sake of time at the, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, so. If anyone has any discussion on anything on the chat, Deb?
No.
Okay. At that point, I'll accept the motion.
Recommend a yes vote on Article 2.
Second.
Okay, motions have been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, do a roll call vote. Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Okay, next up on the agenda is Article 3. Amending the FY 21 Operating Budget. See if the town will vote to amend the FY 21 Operating Budget by reducing the sum budgeted for debt services by $131,384 and no cents. Bringing the total down to $2,504,236. So submitted by the Treasure Collector and the Select Board. Adam, if you wouldn't mind just touching on this, just to go over this article just a little bit for us?
Yeah, this one's Article 3. We had to make a change here. It's more of a procedural amendment, because the Massachusetts Department of Revenue would expect us to reflect accurately the excluded debt. Because essentially what happened was the interest came in for the school lower than expected, so with that, this was submitted to reflect accurately what our excluded debt is.
Excellent. It's always good when numbers go down, especially when it's on the debt side, so.
Absolutely.
Does anybody have any discussion on this?
So where does the $131,000 go?
Adam, if you can, looking to see where the 131 will.
It would be amended, so it would roll into it's not expended. Generally, it grows into free cash.
Okay, I'll wait till we get to that.
Okay, anything on the chat, Deb?
Sorry, no, nothing on the chat.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, actually, take that back. Because it's excluded debt, the revenue number changes because your revenues are excluded, so it actually washes out. My, I misspoke there.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I just, I'm thinking generally of the other process, but yeah, because it's excluded that you see it on your revenues, and then basically because it's changed here, it walk, it evens out.
Okay, anyone else have any discussion on Article 3?
Make a motion to vote in favor.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me now?
Again, well, welcome.
I'm having a little problems with the computer today, so I'm sorry I'm late here.
No worries. We saw you trying to get in and certainly understand that technology sometimes doesn't cooperate.
Did we vote on Article 1 already?
We have.
Can I ask a question and just go back to Adam?
Can we do Articles? Can we finish?
Let's finish Article 3 first, and then we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
So. Article 3, the motion's been made and seconded. Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Will, I don't know if you were able to hear the stuff?
I didn't hear that. I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Amy?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Okay, Will, what was your question on?
My question on Article 1 was, we've, that was, that was about the about the late bills. And we ran, we ran into this, especially for the Highway Department last year, and I remember very distinctly asking at that time Carter if that was going to be worked so that we didn't run into this as much. Adam, do you know if there was, there'd been something to put in place so that we don't have to, especially if it's the same vendor? My question is, is it the same vendor we've seen in the last two or three years?
I know these were two, if I remember correctly, one bill was for $10 and another one was for the the difference between the 121, so you had 111, 28, but then we had a $10 one come in. I can't speak to whether it was the same vendor, but I can say that I believe this practice will improve with the Highway Department making the proper procedures in place that we've already discussed with that department. These late bills, they get me frustrated. I know they got Carter frustrated. It's something that we really want to address, so that's I can check with you if it was the same vendor.
Well, the reason I ask, Adam, is we've seen this come up. I don't know about the other members, but I've seen this for a number of years, and if it's the same vendor, I think we need to take it and end up working with that supplier to take and try to resolve the issue so we can reduce the occurrence of this. I mean, even with some of the new vendors, and that was my only thing I would have, I, I, I believe we should pay the bills, but I had that question last year and I just want to follow up on that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, at this point, we'll go to Article 4. Amending the Bylaws of Appointment of Officers and Trustees. See if the town will vote to amend Article 1, Section 59, subsection 3 of the general bylaws by making certain additions and deletions to the existing bylaw to read as follows. Boil cell annually in June, choosing and appoint unnecessary town officers and trustees for the Point and Public Library in the Gimmie Way Memorial Field and strike the trustees for the Joho Richardson Fund, Masonic Fund, and the Waldo and Haskell Fund to serve from July 1 to June 30. Reason for those change, Adam, is it just, are these?
You probably remember the trust funds, the town's been working to get a lot of these squared away, if you will. So over the last two, past two years, we've been working to combine a number of these small trust funds into two larger funds for the ease of administration and to clarify for their purposes, so we might be able to offer these back to the community. So in approving the petition to do so, the Attorney General's Office approved these and we, right now, we have two accounts, if you will, the heating, which has a balance of $2,912. That's for the purposes of providing some monthly heating assistance to certain Templeton residents, and then the cultural aspect, which has a balance of $414 for the purpose of creating, preserving works of public art and presenting programming on arts, culture, and local history. This was to really just kind of streamline that and do some house cleaning, since we've got that approval from the Attorney General's Office to take these trust funds into two of those from several small ones into two.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Does anyone have any thing they'd like to ask on this?
Been a long time coming, consolidating some of these.
Yeah, it's amazing the amount of work that goes into this, I got to say, and at least this be something that we have available and I think it's a good thing.
All right, at this point, I abstain.
Do we know who the trustees are going to be set?
The, right now, the Select Board voted and the Select Board authorized, I believe, Jackie Prime, the Director of Community Services, to put in the process. put in the process for, uh, anybody that might be interested in applying for these trust funds.
Okay.
Go to the select board.
Accept a, uh, motion?
Make a motion to recommend in favor of Article four.
I second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Uh, do we have any, uh, further discussion or questions of the committee?
No, there's nothing on the chat either.
Okay. Uh, see, hearing no, uh, other comments, concerns, so, uh, call vote, uh, Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Will?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Okay, moving on to Article five, uh, capital budget and, uh, special articles, general fund. See if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars and no cents for various capital activities and special articles described below. Treasurer, collector, tax title work, seventeen thousand, five hundred. NRSD regional agreement, seventeen thousand, five hundred. Uh, vehicle repairs, fifteen thousand. And ClearGov, seven thousand, five hundred. And to meet said appropriation by transfer some for certified, from certified free cash. Uh, open any discussion at this point or questions, or I would like to make a motion, then we'll discuss the article first.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
The ClearGov? I have my concerns about that because ClearGov basically goes to the, uh, state website. And most of that data is where they get it from. It seems, it seems that we should be able to take and end up doing better than putting seventy-five hundred dollars to a company that's just gleaming information off the state website.
Uh, Adam, is, are we using ClickGov just for, uh, information, or are we using the, uh, budgeting portion also? I did, uh, do some exploring on the ClickGov site, and they do have quite a robust, uh, budgeting system and setup. Could you go into that portion of a little bit on, for us?
Well, this is the first ever fee-for-program, which extracts the data from numerous communities and provides citizens with an easy-to-understand comparison to our revenues and expenditure, so we would take the materials from our budget book. Maybe they do perhaps, like Mr. Spring alluded to, uh, get some information from the state, but I, I, they also get information from our, uh, budget process and include that from my understanding of the ClearGov. So it's a little bit of, I think, making it easier for the citizens to, uh, see, see the materials. I know we, we put our budget book up. Um, sometimes like, obviously the folks here at advisory and the members of the select board are pros at going through it, uh, this just makes it easier for citizens that may not be so involved with government to have a better understanding of how our pro, uh, how where their government is, or what, what accounts, how much is the Department of Public Works? How much, uh, percentage of the budget goes into that? It just makes it a, a, a simpler process from my understanding.
Like I did say, I, I did look into ClearGov quite a bit, uh, reading through about it, and it does seem to be, although it does pull information from the mass.gov, but it also, uh, puts it into a lot more user-friendly for the, uh, the, the citizens, I believe. I did go and look at some of the, pulled the charts on mass.gov too. And although their information's good, and using the budgeting process on the ClearGov definitely is a, uh, a, a nice touch, I feel, as far as, uh, giving a little more insight to, um, the community, especially if it's gonna be used that way.
Uh, I also think, and, and I don't think we'd get to the level of seventy-five hundred dollars, but I think, you know, when people call and ask for information or ask Adam for budgetary information, he has to task people to get that, so, um, that maybe, uh, uh, like I said, I don't think it's a terrible amount of money, but it's still a savings to where people, um, can go and, and use those comparisons, and, and it is, I mean, you're paying to have somebody put the data together in a readable form is really what it is, but, um, the other websites can be cumbersome and, and don't do comparisons.
Does anyone have anything else they'd like to, uh, add about these, uh, Article five?
Uh, I can't vote on this particular one with that on there. I'd like to see it separated, if possible.
Well, we, we can't separate it, so it would have to be separated at town meeting.
Right, have to be separated on town floor. At this point, we'll be voting on the article that's, uh, been presented to us.
We have that ability to take and end up doing that as, as, as the advisory committee.
As far as?
Separating them.
On the town floor, not now.
No, we can end up doing it now. That, that could be our recom- in fact, one of the things that I would like to take and end up seeing is not only giving our recommendation, but having some verbiage, so it's, people can see why we voted for some of these. Uh, I, as a recommendation.
So we, he's saying we can recommend to that i- if it's separated out, so we can say we recommend a yes vote if ClearGov is separated out. Is that what you mean, Will?
Can you repeat that, Deb?
So you're saying we could, we can recommend a yes vote if ClearGov is separated out from those line items?
Right, you can end up doing it individually or, uh, le- le- lumping and having that separated.
To, so we can make that recommendation, you're correct, on here for the voter guide, but it's gonna have to be either, uh, it has to be a citizen unless we agree as a committee, um, to change it on town floor. Uh, on, on the meeting floor. Just because we do it now doesn't have any effect on how it's read at town meeting. Somebody still has to come and say, I would like to vote on these individually, or I'd like to vote on the three, um, and am, and amend the article on the town meeting floor. I mean, our recommendation could be that, but, um, but we can't, we, just because we say that doesn't make it automatically happen on town floor.
I do have a comment from Board of Select, our select board member, Terry Griffiths. She says that, um, if we were using it being ClearGov for budget, it would cost extra, so no, we aren't using it to budget. ClearGov would be for demographics.
So knowing that, um, I mean, I'll say it, I think it's a waste of money. It's a beautiful website, but we just paid for a website for our town. And there should be a way for all of the information to be put on our town website for everybody to go there and access what they need. I understand it's cumbersome, but that's part of your responsibility as a citizen is figure it out, call and ask questions, find somebody else to help you, like, that's just my two cents worth. I'm also curious what the line item is for the regional agreement. Is that for the actual regional agreement to have people come to look at that? Is that part of our shared expense with Phillipston, or is that something else?
This is, uh, the process of reviewing and amending the regional district agreement. Um, these funds will be, uh, provide the team with, uh, the funding to pay for legal and counseling advice during this, uh, very important process, uh, Amy.
Okay, thanks. That's what I was thinking it was, I just wanted to make sure.
And, and Adam, I was gonna ask on the vehicle repairs, is there something specific that needs repairing right now?
These were two, uh, major pieces of our snow fighting equipment that are in need of repairs, uh, the, the Bob Sozik needs these, uh, to, to continue his operations and, uh, obviously, these repairs, uh, while maintaining the operating budget, uh, this, this will hopefully help us, uh, get through the fiscal year, um, and make those, um.
Did, I just wanted to make it clear, because ve- ve- vehicle repairs is somewhat generic and it could be anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, so, um, okay, so it's for, it's for s- snow clearing vehicles, okay?
On vehicle repairs, if it's, uh, rather than taking and use, uh, certified free crash, why, why is, uh, he not seeking, uh, monies from the emergency reserve if, if he didn't anticipate these?
That is a question, um, we just felt it was coming up at town meeting and the fall town meeting and to go this route, um, it's all preference of management, however the, um, administrator wanted to go and, um, Mr. Terrenceini chose to place it here.
So I guess my only question is, you know, I don't wanna beat ClearGov to death, but if it's really only for demographic purposes, was there was there a request for that type of information in a better format? And how much do we really anticipate that that will get utilized?
Um, I think, uh, Terry meant to say maybe additional, uh, but this is really for the budget itself and to see the documents that are up there. Um, and, and like, our budget book's great, don't get me wrong. It, 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 it's it, it, people understand it and know how it works, but the average person that is not involved in government goes there. And it's a lot of, a lot of sheets of paper, everybody knows from the fifty-one hundred to the fifty-seven hundred each department. It's a lot of information to process. This allows people, let's say, to go up there, have, see a breakdown of, okay, the Department of Public Works takes up certain percentage of the budget, that our debt service is at a certain percentage of the budget. Uh, as Mr. Joyce said, I, I get calls all the time. And, uh, if I were to explain sometimes the way I understand it, the other person on the other lines, like, wha- what is this, what is he talking about? So sometimes I think it's better to simplify this process. Uh, it will allow our website to, I think it's great, I think this is another way to get more materials out to the public, and I think that's a good thing, uh, especially because we have an open town government, uh, our open town meeting, excuse me. And, uh, I, I don't see, uh, any issues with this, uh, I, it's gonna be something, I think, that will bring more transparency to government. And, uh, and hopefully will increase the participation we have, uh, at the town meeting. That's, that's my take on it.
Oh. So I'd like to say. Um, I, I I mean, we should be transparent regardless, and it shouldn't cost us seventy-five hundred dollars. If the information is on the town website, um, people should be able to go through it. And, um, and, and find the data, and then if they have questions, they can call you, um. Yeah, it's nice, but how many people would really use this for this cost? Most of the people that I've found that are really interested in the budget in the town already know how to find it in the budget book and the ti- in the website.
But I guess I would question, would more people who don't have the time to manipulate the information to that degree be able to glean something from it if it was already kind of packaged for them to look at?
I, I think, uh, and I, I agree with that. Deb, it's, I think it's important that although it's, uh, not used for the budgeting process necessarily, it does work in our data into the, uh, equation as far as portions of which budget, wh- what portion was used on this, what portion's being used for that. Um, that's one thing that the mass.gov doesn't do, it won't break it down to our portion of and show the person. It'll compare it to other communities, but it won't necessarily allow us to have something that, you know, somebody that's not very used to working and going through Excel books and spreadsheets and of, if they can pull up a pie chart instead, and actually see the same numbers that many of us are sitting there scanning through the Excel sheet, I think it's, uh, it, it's important, cause that may, may get some better feedback at town meeting. May have more people asking questions about stuff at town meeting, not just, uh, we have more discussion on something that's gonna cost twelve dollars at town meeting instead of the twelve million dollar budget. And sometimes you wonder if things aren't being understood correctly.
Well, it was, it was mentioned about, Adam mentioned about, uh, if they wanna take and see individual i- individual departments. Why can't a pie chart be done as part of the budgeting process or part of the budget? Or the advisory can end up taking and doing that and putting it on the website. Why, why pay, uh, this, this people here, that they can end up doing a pie chart or something else, breaking it out? When we have the ability here. I, I mean, I'm trying to take and end up saving some money for this community and not, not, not spending it, I mean, if, of doing a pie chart by department, uh, by, and plugging it in is not, is not rocket science. Uh, the admin, whoever the administrator or whoever's gonna be doing the budget can do a pie chart or the, the advisory committee can do the pie chart.
I, I, I kinda discouraged that a little bit, Will, because I think if you were to have somebody that's gonna put all this data in and unless they're gonna dedicate their full day each day to it, I think you're looking at a lot of information. Um, we certainly could put forward, I'm sure, a position, and Adam would probably welcome that, that we put a, uh, position forward that does information and puts it all out and compiles it all, but instead of the seventy-five hundred, we'd be looking at forty thousand, which I, for a person, plus benefits. I don't think that, and unless I'm, I know I don't have the time to volunteer to do all these accounts with pie charts and all that, and somebody may, or you know, I'm not sure the situation, but I don't think it's just one pie chart, I think that's, you know, it's one each account, the different departments have various accounts. I think it's important that, you know, people can understand that, not you know, hope that somebody put their pie chart together correctly. You know, if it's numbers in a company, they're responsible for doing the correct figures and numbers.
Adam, how many other communities use this? Are there other communities around us that, that are similar to ours that are using them?
I, I know it's a pretty popular program, um, and a lot of communities, I don't have a specific number for you, Deb.
Yeah.
But quite a few are doing it, and, uh, this is something that, um, but, I mean, when I, I mentioned transparency, I, I mean, obviously we always strive for, but I, I think, uh, some certainly that's something that we could be approve upon, and I think the chairman alluded to the fact that, uh, it's not just one pie chart. I mean, a lot of people in town don't realize after this fall town meeting that we're gonna have upwards of eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, almost one million dollars in our stabilization account. A lot of people don't know what our bond rating is. A lot of people don't know all these other different aspects of their local town government. I think it's a way, um, to, to, to highlight the, the positives of the town and, and we, we, we are on a road where uh, we're improving and, uh, why, why wouldn't we want to show the community exactly all that information, um? That's just my take on it. I think, uh, I think it's seventy-five hundred dollars, it's not a, it's money, but I think it's money well spent, and I think it's money that will hopefully increase participation in the future. Or more people wanna be engaged and empowered in the process. And, and the knowledge is power. People that have more information, um, certainly, uh, provide, like, how many times at town meeting do we hear it? How much is in this account? How much is in that account? Well, those questions will, will be right up on the webpage.
Right.
I'd, I'd like to see the, uh, town, I don't know what the additional cost was down the road, but, uh, look into it for the budgeting process also through them. Uh, looking at the, we may have a excellent budget book in that. But I think in it for a, uh, something that makes it easier for everyone to understand and make it more open to the, uh, community and open to the department heads and that. And easier for town hall to put a budget together. I think unless it's an exor- exorbitant amount of money, I think that the more effective and the more we can be efficient when it comes to that, there are the things that time does, should be spent on, and it's not always just on the, you know, on the spreadsheet. Sometimes if we can do it easier, then we can be more effective. In my opinion.
So I'm all for information and transparency and all of that, that's great. Um, I think ClearGov is a wonderful thing. I think it's really, its appeal is more for people to compare where they wanna move to. Why would I move to Templeton? Why would I choose Templeton? Because anybody who doesn't know our town's bond rating probably doesn't know why that's important. And a few quick graphs and a little mini dive on ClearGov isn't really gonna help them, and they're gonna end up And a few quick graphs and a little mini dive on ClearGov isn't really gonna help them, and they're gonna end up asking the town government anyway, because that's where you get that information. As someone who's trying to see the rationale for spending seventy five hundred dollars, which actually is half the cost of the line above that. So in theory, it's a one vehicle repair to what we know is a fleet of vehicles that need repair, we know our public works vehicles are not brand new. We know Mr. Sozik's gonna have other vehicles that break down after winter or during winter. And personally, I'd rather have a plowed road than ClearGov at this particular juncture, I think that could be tabled. Again, just my opinion, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse either, I'd love it. I'd love to be able to drop four million dollars and get everything everybody wants. I don't see the, the rush on this, I was at the presentation when this first came out. I think it's gorgeous, I think it'd be great to have Templeton up there, it'd be great to put all our stuff in one place to be able to hand all our information to someone else and be like, here, you put it up. The truth is, we have the technology, our town has the technology, we maybe don't have the staff for it, maybe we don't have the number of people. And that's a whole different conversation and not one that belongs here, but that's just my two cents, um. If we're gonna call for a vote the way it sits, I wouldn't recommend four because we've got to look at it as a whole package. I would remove, like Will, I would remove the ClearGov piece. And these other things I'm in favor of, I think the top three, those are things that have to be done, we can't mess, that regional agreement is gonna be addressed, we have to pay our share.
Okay, does anyone have any additional comments on?
Article five. Chairman, if I can maybe perhaps have, uh, the committee, if this is fine with the committee to have them vote on Article Five as presented, and then maybe after that, then vote on Article Five, with the exception of ClearGov.
Uh, I do not have a issue with that, uh, does anyone have a issue doing it that way, it does address the article, but it also addresses the, uh, concern that some people have of a ClearGov.
Sorry, I I lost internet connection there for a minute.
Uh, what we're looking to do is, uh, go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of. Or if we Go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
Basically, if we vote on the article as written, uh, if you're not in favor of the article with ClearGov, we can put, and we are able to put a comment next to our our just, our decision on the, uh, as far as why the vote was, if somebody had a no vote. Uh, we can put that next to it that would be in favor without it, uh, rather than having two votes on the same article. I think we might be able to, uh, just put it forward like that as far as that goes.
Okay.
As a comment on the handout. Would that work, Adam, as far as what you're, kind of combines the two of what you were thinking about?
Uh, yeah, I I think, uh, if if there's clear, um, I I mean, I I would just probably just have the vote on, on, on it as presented, then probably have a vote and and take the ClearGov off and and see how that vote goes. That way you have two, 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 uh, where you, you covered the first one.
Only do that is if, if you said, okay, I'd like, uh, you know, and I'm not making a motion here, you know, have a motion to approve the article as written. It passes, if, you know, even if it's three to two, then there's no need to do it with the other one, but if it doesn't, then you would maybe consider adding.
Well, I see what you're saying, yeah, that's fine. Yes.
Okay, can I look for, uh, someone to make a motion on the article that we have in front of us? I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, pass the article that we have in front of us.
So to recommend a yes vote?
To recommend a yes vote on the article. Okay, if we don't have a second, then we'll.
Well, I ca- I'll second it, but, um, so we can vote on it.
Okay. All right, anymore comments, Deb, anything on the chat as far as on the?
Uh, no, no comments on the chat.
Okay. Um, all those, uh, in favor of the article, Tony?
Uh, no. Uh, my, my objection is to, uh, the ClearGov.
Will? You still there, Will?
Should we leave them?
I will try to come back to Will, uh, Deb?
Yes.
Amy?
No, because of the ClearGov.
Okay, I'm a yes. Uh, Will?
No.
Okay.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Cause I'm still having problems here.
Yes, we heard the no.
So, so what I'd like, Tom, if if we could, is leave the vote as, um, we turn down it, but the, um, put in the comments is that the dissenting members, uh, did not want ClearGov in there. Now, that's gonna do nothing unless somebody on the town meeting floor makes a motion to pull ClearGov out of that separately. But as a committee, I just wanna, you know, for the top three, I'm all for those three, I don't have a problem with them, I just just a little, I I agree with Mr. Spring that I I just don't know that we need to spend the seventy five hundred dollars right now.
I I, Tony, I believe we can end up voting to take and end up having, uh, the first three and excluding ClearGov.
Y- yeah, we can, well, well, that's kind of what we, well, we could make that vote, Will. And and that would be our recommendation to the town, but we cannot change the warrant article, that has to be done on town meeting floor.
Yeah, what, what, you're gonna have the moderator ask what our recommendation is, and when you read out that the fact that the advisory committee, uh, does votes against this, uh, with ClearGov on it and recommends that that, that not be done and all only votes for the, for the three, I think that you'll end up having some people say, okay. And the reason why we think that's, it's shouldn't be on there is the, the use of the money, et cetera, you know?
No, no, I think that's all valid reasons, Will. Uh, but unless someone go- goes to amend Article Five to remove ClearGov from there, then it doesn't matter what we recommend, I mean.
So the three of you, the three of you would be in favor of it if it wasn't for ClearGov there, correct, is that what I?
That's correct.
So it was, a recommendation was two to three against with the three
Dissents.
Three objections being that they did not want to have ClearGov included in the article.
Right.
Right, so the way, the way I wrote it, cause I used that, that spreadsheet, so I just wrote, recommend a yes vote, two in favor, three against, dissenting members would like to see ClearGov line up and removed from the article to be voted on separately.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
But unless someone makes a motion on the town floor to amend Article Five, it'll be voted on just as it stands. But, but that way, Will, we get our opinion out there that we think it's just gonna be up to somebody to make that motion.
Well, as, as members of the committee, we can also make that as a motion
I understand.
On the floor after, after we get the recommendation. I mean, it's, it's that easy.
Yep, I, I don't disagree with you.
Okay. Article six. Uh, deposits the, the general fund stabilization and OPEB accounts. See if the town vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred, two thousand, five hundred dollars and no cents to make deposits into its operations and capital stabilization accounts. And the OPEB reserve as account as follows. Opex one forty two five hundred, CapEx forty thousand, OPEB twenty thousand. And to meet said appropriation of the transfer said sum from certified free cash. Uh, open for any discussion or?
Yeah, I have a question, Adam, what's our total free cash?
Our total free cash?
Yep.
Uh, well, after, you mean after this is approved?
No, I, I mean, no, I mean, right now, what's, do we have a certified free cash number from last year?
I believe our free cash that was certified was roughly one point three million, roughly.
One point three, and doesn't the town financial policy call for thirty percent to go in the OPEB, OPEB, OPX? And I forget.
Thirty percent in the OPEB?
I thought it was.
It's five percent.
No.
And I have to agree with you, Tony, the, the, the policy basically says about putting in the, the money. Uh, and what, what they have been doing is, instead of taking the, the percentage for OPEB, uh, CapEx and and OPEB, uh, before they end up going to the state, the, uh, the, 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 the other stabilization funds, they should be taking it out out of free cash before they go to, uh, the, uh, the, the capital, uh.
Right, so I loo- I looked at because of, of a comment that was made, so I looked at the financial plan and unfortunately, doesn't the financial, uh, management plan, and it doesn't really say that though, Will, it doesn't say it has to be taken out before you pay for this other stuff, I agree with you, I think it should be that the, the sta- stabilization fund should be paid first, and then you pay other bi- other stuff with free cash. But that they, for, for the past, you know, since I've been on the committee, they've chose to pay quote unquote bills or whatever, and then whatever's left over, uh, they come up with the numbers for the stabilization accounts.
Well, just because we haven't done that, uh, uh, the correct way in, in the past, and I said correct way, because most other places will end up using it and putting OPEB, uh, PEX, uh, first before they end up doing the capital stuff. And they, they put those into the stabilization funds before they end up doing anything else above and beyond.
Yeah, I, and and I don't, I don't want to give the impression, I think that a lot of these capital expenditures that they use are very important to the town. Um, it's just that as we keep building up, uh, the stabilization accounts, that, that only helps the town. So, um, I guess it's just a different philosophy of how it should be. How, how the percentage should be applied, whether it's, um, pre-capital or post-capital expenditures.
Anyone else have anything they want to? Add to this article?
I believe, uh, we had a citizen that actually brought that out a number of times to the interim administrator. And the last I ended up hearing from that individual was that the, the way we're talking, Tony, is the way that the, uh, the change, uh, wa- i- is gonna be suggested to happen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So we, it was, the free cash was starting balance is one point three two seven million.
Thank you.
Alright, so you're taking less than total, less than, uh, taking around total of fifteen percent ish. My math is right, don't want to do public math, but around fifteen to eighteen percent for stabilization.
Stabilization would follow a percentage of thirty five percent.
Right, but that's not where you're at.
Uh, that's why recently what happened was, uh, practiced to date was, did he ducked an amount anticipated for the capital program?
I know, no, I know how you.
Well, tha- 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 that's the challenge we have in, in town, um, quite a few, like, we have a salt shed, we have a lot of, uh, good things going on in the town. Um, but in order to have a, a capital program, we have to, uh, take care of those, I mean, let, let's face it, uh, we, we have, uh, right now nearly eight hundred fifty five thousand dollars. Um,
I know how you get to the number, I know how you get to the number.
Yeah.
But really, we should have at least, um, what are they saying, about fifteen to twenty percent of our operating budget and stabilization, which really should be on the neighborhood of close to two million dollars, so, um, it, it's a philosophy that they've done. Um, and I, it's tough to weigh the capital expenditures that we absolutely need that help the town versus keeping that stabilization fund up that was at zero, so, I mean, in so, in some respects, I absolutely give um, Carter and and the team credit for getting the stabilization fund essentially going and getting some balance in those. But at some point, I think we need to try to look at putting more money into them.
Well, uh, his, here's something that had been talked about way back when, and it has never come to fruition uh, under this management, is there should be, there, there should be a stabilization fund for for the highways and also building maintenance like some other communities have uh, as to take and end up putting a certain percentage in those, so we don't run into some of the issues that we've had with the road, especially the roads. You got people that are complaining about the roads, there should be a, a separate capitalization, uh, for that a stabilization account, and same thing for the buildings, we, we have not done a good job in, in the past, and I would like to take it up. I mean, that's the, the future, but right now, we gotta deal with what we have, and it, I, I believe that we, we need to take and end up changing the process.
Well, I, I came from.
Case, I think you'd have to change the, your ac- the actual financial policy then, because although it goes through and gives you the percentages that we should have, it precedes it by saying it's a target, it doesn't say that's the exact number. The target number that we need to reach is the percentages, whether we, if we can't hit fifty percent this year because we had a salt set shed collapse, and we need to only hit forty five percent this year because of a major expense, that's the purpose of having a target versus a, an absolute.
A- and it doesn't say if, if it's pre or post capital expenditures.
No.
Either, so, it's, it's, uh, it's how the town administrator at the time chose to do it, he's not wrong. So, okay.
Anyone have anything else they'd like to add to this article?
If I could just also say, um, before I came here, I, I, I worked for the city of Chico, and, you know, they had a hefty, um, stabilization account, but you have a leaking roof, it, you gotta take care of it, and quite frankly, uh, I think we've, we've grown this account, um. Do, do we all agree a hundred percent on everything, I, I believe we can all say that there's been significant growth here and I, I want that to continue, so. I think, uh, we've made a lot of capital improvements, I think, uh, the town can see, uh, uh, they're no longer getting the coal patch, they're getting a hot box that actually fills it with, uh, with a solid where it's actually stays in the ground as opposed to it rains and then it comes out.
They get the new one after the first one got wrecked?
Well, you know, we have our challenges and, you know, it's just a matter of really protecting, uh, the services for our residents, and, and it's really finding that balance. But I, I think we can all agree that we, we've, we've come a long way.
Any comments on the chat, Deb?
No, no comments.
This time I'd entertain a motion on Article Six.
I'll recommend a yes vote on Article Six.
So a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? I'll do a roll call vote, Tony?
Yes.
Will? Will?
Can you come back to me, please?
Deb?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
I will vote yes for this article, only if we put the thing in that we should be changing the, uh, the, the, that needs to be changes to the financial plan to reflect, uh, making the, the money's out for these capitals before.
That wouldn't be part of this article. That'd be part of the. Of making a change to the financial plan along the way.
But I'm saying is a yes vote with the recommendation that changes should be made to the financial plan to end up uh. Changing the 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 process. So that we end up uh prior to the the capital stabilization accounts, getting monies just to put into the. The s- the actual stabilization funds.
Okay, and I'm a yes, so that's five yes. And we'll uh. Address down the road. We can examine the uh capital, the stabilization fund process. Article Seven. Uh, Community Preservation Act Appropriations Seeth Town Vote to Accept Report of the Community Preservation Committee. An appropriate sum of fifty thousand dollars and no sense for various activities. Special articles as follows. Uh, fifty thousand dollars for the purposes of Stone Bridge. Uh, Phase One of development work removing the existing culvert and constructing bridge abutments for the reuse of Stone Bridge on Stone Bridge Road for open space and recreational use. Any uh questions, comments, concerns on? Article Seven that they want to bring up?
Has the capital uh uh Community Preservation uh Committee voted on this?
Capital Planning Committee?
No, the the Community Preservation.
They recommended the uh Article Mister Spring.
And the capital is also recommended?
It went in front of capital uh last year.
And it was recommended?
The 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 funding wa- wasn't uh, because this is a different funding source, but the recommendation would be if there was a funding source to cover this. And the CPC is willing to fund this.
Okay, did they that that was Will's question? Did they take a vote and say, yes, they'll fund this?
It was pushed off to another year only because the the we weren't going to use free cash for this. So it the capital planning.
Right now, has Community Preservation Act? Does Community Preservation Fund said, yes, we'll give you fifty thousand dollars for this in in this fiscal year?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That that was the question, not I whether they pushed it off or not. It's that they have taken a vote, and they're willing to give the money for this that the selectmen have asked for essentially.
It wouldn't be on the Warren if they hadn't.
It was presented to the uh Capital Planning Committee uh back when um Mister May and uh the rest of us were on it. Last year.
Ri- right, but without having the history of. Um, capital planning or the community preservation are two different accounts, right?
Well, the capital planning, it still needs to be presented by the bylaw, but this this the Community Preservation Committee has. Voted to fund fifty thousand dollars. Keep in mind, we also got a twenty five thousand dollar uh state grant.
No, 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 no. I just, we just want to make sure that the right people have said, yes, here, we have the money, and you can use it for this, for Stone Bridge. That's that's all we're asking.
That is correct.
And you said in for affirmative to that.
Well, I mean, just because the ca- Community Preservation Committee has voted for it, doesn't necessarily mean that that the. The uh capital folks also voted for this th- and this particular year. Is that correct, Miss Adam?
I I believe the bylaw, it's it was presented and it met that criteria. I I nobody on the Capital uh Planning Committee when I was on it uh spoke against uh Stone Bridge whatsoever.
But they did they vote for it?
They voted to ha- based on the funding.
They voted to to pass it over, that they they voted to take it and end up saying yes, no, or it's leave it on there with 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 the the uh. Up the appropriation coming from Community Preservation.
There was a vote. Based on the fact that the funding of free cash to hold it over. So because this is the Community Preservation Committee. The committee would. Have, and it was presented to the Capital Planning Committee. So it meets the criteria.
Anything on the chat, Deb?
Nothing on the chat. Actually, somebody says, uh, Rolling Anderson completely agree with Tony right now, but I'm not sure if that's in reference to this or or something earlier. That's it, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I I'll make a motion to uh recommend a yes vote for Article Seven.
By a second?
I'll second that.
Any more uh input? Hearing none, Tony?
Yes.
Will? Will? Will, are you still out there? Deb?
Maybe, yeah, I'm a yes.
Amy?
Yes.
You back with us, Will?
And. I'll vote yes for. But I I I think that. This needs to be a better process.
And I'm a yes. Late uh retention of our tax deed properties. Let's see if the vote, see if the town will vote to retain for its certain tax delinquent properties. Which it foreclosed the right of redemption and acquired through tax deed for the following purposes. Parcel one Elm Street. Uh, land at thirty five hundred pluses minus square feet. Uh, passing to an Elm Street. Land of nineteen thousand five plus or minus on the board of assesses map as written. For first parcel for recreational purposes and second parcel for highway and general municipal purposes. Uh, Adam, can you give us a little input on this article and uh?
Uh, the purposes are there, why the town wants to retain them, and uh quite frankly, uh, market wise, uh. They with the criteria of of meeting the building and all the specifications, just be in the best interest of the town to hold on to them.
Does anyone have any uh comments, questions, concerns on uh these this article?
Out these two uh uh parcels along the river.
Adam, do you know if they're along the river?
Well, one of them's for recreation purp- I think Mister Springs talked about the one for conservation purposes. This this one's for recreation purposes.
Do you know the the locations are over on Elm Street, correct?
Both of them are on Elm Street.
Well, I don't, I think Elm doesn't, what does Elm start? It starts at the beginning after the bridge, so. I believe.
Thirty five hundred square feet, hold on. I didn't work on this one, so. Carter did. That could be for Elm Street. So Mister Springs' question is whether or not that's for Elm Street?
I just asked if the if it was along the river.
Hold on. Let me just search it.
It would have been good if we had a a map of these two uh reference to Article Eight.
Will, what's your concern if it's near the river? I'm just trying to move the process along while we're trying to find the information.
I would have to go back and that, because these are listed. I can't just search it by, I'd have to get the map parcel and everything and see if it's next to the river.
Will, did you have a concern with it being by the river that we're keeping it, or?
No, I'm just, I I just, my question was just if if they're both by the river, I I believe one of them is, and I'm not sure where the other one is, and that just.
Oh, I just got it. I just found it. Let me zoom out here. Yeah, it's a little small piece of land.
It could be for, I'm looking at the map I was looking at.
Well, it's like a parcel, because could uh. Steve, allow me to screen share. Because Mister Spring wanted to see a map, so I wanted to pull the map up. I need to have a co-hosting. Okay, thanks, Steve. Okay, so I pulled the map up. You see this parcel right here, uh, the thirty five hundred square feet. And the map number, it was a little bit tricky finding. That's why it took me some time, but it's right here. It's literally this parcel. Right here.
Does that answer your question, Will?
I see it better if I get out. Hold on, let me just. Switch the base map here.
So looking at this map, I think the answer to Will's question is going to be no, it's not along the river over there.
Yeah, I could just, uh, I just want to give him a clear answer and a map here. Okay, see that better? So it looks like it's just this piece of property right over here. On the side. So this appears to be Gilman Way. I have that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Michael's Lane.
Yeah.
So for recreation purposes, so no, it's not near the river, so I, that's why I wanted to double check this. So it's right here, this little piece. That's interesting, and Gilman Waits right over here, so at least the public was able to see. So, yeah, I mean, to my original point, I uh, this this would just be a part of the. Stay over in this for recreation purposes.
The other one also says Elm Street. Is it adjacent, the one for, just because we're looking at the map? It says for highway use, it's a bigger piece.
Five oh four, hold on, Amy.
Yeah, I think thirty point two is going to be right next to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see it.
So that's right here. And this would be for highway purposes. So, no, it's good that you asked that question.
Essentially the roadway that goes up to Gilman Way, and you go straight to go to Gilman Way, and you go left to go into the neighborhood there.
Yeah, I mean, that was good. At least everybody got to see.
Yeah.
What we were talking about tonight. I just took me a while to get to the map and. Uh, I usually search by address, but since these were listed by map and parcel numbers, it took a little bit longer.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else on this article?
No, thanks, Adam. Those are weird, but those are parcels that are. That weren't already town owned. How strange how these things come around. I've been driving up that way to Gilman Way since I was little. I've lived here my whole life.
Uh, yeah, and Carter was working on it, so I I I literally just pulled it up. I remember him talking about it, but I I have so many other projects with procurement and everything, so. Um, that, so I learned uh, um, you could see right on the map and then show the public, so that that was good.
Anything on the chat, Deb?
Uh, no. We're good.
All right, no one has anything uh to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to vote in favor of this article.
Okay.
Okay, motions are made and seconded. Any further uh discussion? Hearing none, Tony?
Yes.
Will?
I'm gonna abstain because I had to take a step away. I had an important call I had to take.
Okay, Deb?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, Article Nine, uh, sale of parcels, tax-deed land, Seeth Town Vote to Authorize Select Board to Dispose of Certain Tax Delinquent Properties. Which it foreclosed the right of redemption and acquired through tax deed as follows. Uh, list uh seven parcels, one being on State Road, Fifth Street, Willow Street, Whitney Street. South Main Street, Laurel View, and Pleasant Street. And further to authorize the select board to execute, deliver, and grant such deeds with restrictions, including but not limited to those set forth in a document entitled Sale of Tax-Deeded Lands. Templeton, Mass, August nineteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, submitted by the select board, two thirds vote required. Uh, Adam, I know there's been a, could have been discussion on some of these properties, um. If you could just kind of go over it a little bit with us. Where we are with what's going forward.
Yeah, I was involved with this one. Uh, we drew five uh bids on five of them. For a total just over thirty one thousand dollars on September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Parcel three Willow Street, it came to our attention after it was voted upon to go out to the uh process on um. The sale for the tax deed, sale of parcels for the tax-deed lands. Um. And at that point, uh, we decided to uh. Basically, wha- wha- the question was, is she going to end them or not? We we chose because the the board voted to go through the sale and. Was Article ninety seven land. Obviously, we wouldn't sell it anyways. Um, that came up later and uh. The the real uh one that I think the town really wants to see is a ten Pleasant Street. That's parcel seven here. That unfortunately, that one did not draw a bid. Th- th- this process, uh, it it took a lot of time for the town to acquire this property. And right now, the. Town's going to be looking at pursuing all options in regards to ten Pleasant Street and how we're going to proceed forward. With this project, whether uh Lori is work working out the Attorney General's Office to look for funds to demolish the building. To look at, and I I I just recently met with with our CDBG uh person, Peter Samborn, and we're discussing the possibility of. Uh, possibly having uh grants for affordable housing uh for the project. We're looking at, but before we we go down all these roads, I think uh. At least the last one I just mentioned, we want to really go and see if we can. Uh, sell this property as well. So we're pursuing all options here, whether uh from. Uh, survey, wha- 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 the bestest to make making whatever we can do to make the property more marketable. And uh. See where it goes, the it's it's certainly uh an eyesore for folks, and it it's too bad. I mean, it's right near the main road there. Um, but on the good side, with with the sale, it did go well. Outside of that, we were able, and subject to town meaning vote, we will be able to bring in roughly thirty one thousand dollars to the town of Templeton. Um, due to uh these uh the sale of these tax-deeded land parcels. Five of the seven.
Adam, you know if the select board's planning to. Put a correct article forward with removing parcel three on town floor?
I've already changed in the voter's guide. Except it would be except parcel three. As the anticipated motion.
Would they be doing that for the Article Parcel Seven also, while we're trying to find out how how to proceed with other avenues?
I think it'd be appropriate to keep it there for the sale of of parcels, but that way it. I think it'd be appropriate to keep it there for the sale of parcels, that way it will allow us to really, uh, we wanted to go forward, let's say, and. We, we, we were fortunate, we landed, uh, funds from the Attorney General's Office to tear down the building, and, uh, we, we, we would make that site more marketable, so. We want to keep parcel seven there to allow us to, uh, the tools to, to really, uh, work on that parcel. And we need the town meeting vote in order to do that, to move ten Pleasant Street forward.
Adam, if we voted for, for this, what, Article seven, parcel seven, uh, and we changed it from, uh, demolishing it, or. Or whatever, and we, we cho, the, the town chose to do something other than that, they seek a grant for a rehab of this thing. Excuse me, would that affect, uh, our ability to not put this on, uh, for, for sale, or, or put it out for sale, or? I, I'm just trying to get some clarification, if we, if we come up with some other reason not to take and end up putting it for sale, since we don't have any bidders on it now.
Well, we only went out to sale for it once, Mr. Spring, and, uh, unfortunately, we, we didn't receive any bids, but like we do with our surplus auction. Before we go about disposing of it totally, we, we always give it a second opportunity, and, uh, we did come to learn that there were a couple, uh, potential bidders. Uh, that didn't bid on it because they lost track of it, uh, these contractors from what, uh, I heard from our development services director. So I, I, we, we always want to keep whatever option we can open, and, uh, I, I think it would be appropriate to leave this on. Because we're going to be really extremely busy, especially come annual town meeting with, uh, usually we have thirty-plus articles, and.
So we do have the potential of, uh, having, uh, because, uh, the, the, the lack of bidders that, uh, at, at the correct time. That somebody may be interested, or there were people that were planning on it, that we, we have that opportunity to still sell it, that's, am I, am I understanding that correctly?
You, you, that is correct, and then the problem is right now with the Attorney General's Office, uh, challenge that we're facing is there's no funds available from what we hear, uh, for demolition projects.
So the motion will end up saying all, all, all except parcel three of a sale, is that correct?
That's correct.
Tom, I have a comment coming from Timothy Toth, a member of the select board. Um, he says ten Pleasant Street was discussed at length, and the select board has agreed to keep it listed and pursue all available options. That's all.
That is correct. All right, so as far as. The motion is read. It'll be without parcel three is the way it's going to read on town floor, I'm like, correct? That's what was voted on, it's like board meeting, Adam?
Yeah, we, we, yes, that we, we're going to be, the most anticipated motion of the voters' guide will be all those parcels, with the exception of parcel three.
Just some feedback, Adam, in the future, it'd be nice to take and end up seeing, uh, some of the actual motions, uh, when we come to pre-town, so. The, the changes like that would be something that we were aware of already, wouldn't, would, would stop the questions.
Sometimes we get them done earlier, sometimes we don't, um, voters' guide, uh, but usually, if it, during including the voters' guide, we do get them done before, so it all depends on a matter of timing. Because, don't, keep in mind too, sometimes the advisory committee will meet earlier for the pre-town meeting, and we might not have it completed by then, it, it's all a matter of timing.
Okay, does anyone have anything else to add to this motion?
I make a motion to, uh, recommend Article Nine, uh, providing that article, or parcel three is out of it.
So a second?
I'll second.
Any more, uh, discussion? Okay, call the vote, Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Tony, if you could just help me out here on, uh, the remaining articles of citizen petitions, do we, uh. Voters advisory, our recommendations, or what's the procedure normally been on that?
So we can choose to talk to them about them if we wish, uh, if we don't, we normally just put in the voters' guide that the advisory committee, uh, makes no recommendation on this article. So if, if anybody wants to talk about, like, Article Ten, for example, um, and then if, if someone wants to propose a motion to, you know, for or against. Then we would take a vote, if not, we would just, uh, make a motion, um, to basically say the advisory committee may, takes, uh, makes no recommendation on this article.
Okay, so does anyone want to, uh, discuss our recommendation on Article Ten?
I'll make a motion to not recommend, not make a recommendation for Article Ten.
Second.
Okay, uh, most of the main seconded for, uh, not making, no recommendation on Article Ten, do I have any discussion?
Deb, could you roll those, could you scroll up on those?
All right, yeah. There we go, thanks, Tony.
Okay, at this, hearing no more comments, so, uh, call the vote on no recommendation on this article, Amy?
So no recommendation?
We're not recommending.
Yes, on no recommendation.
Yeah.
Deb?
Yeah.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, Article eleven, does anyone have any discussion, or would they like to make no recommendation on Article eleven?
I make a motion that the advisory committee makes no recommendation on Article eleven.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, any further discussion? Deb, anything on the chat?
No.
Okay. Uh, call the vote, Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article twelve?
Uh, I would like to discuss this one.
So would I.
Okay, that's, uh, Article twelve, the citizen petition for a quorum at annual town meeting. Uh, looking to, uh, number of voters necessary to be twenty-five percent of voters registered as of the previous January one. Uh, once a quorum's been assembled, can be called at any time to, uh. Basically recount to make sure that the percentage is not changed. Anyone would like me to read the exact words?
Yeah, so, so first of all, Adam, do you know how many, um, registered voters we have in town approximately?
Well, I can't, I couldn't answer that question.
I'm looking at them.
So, so first of all, why, why January first, when you can vote, you, you have until, you know, like a month before the election to register, or even. To get your ballot for just a regular election, so, so that, why the January first, you get people move in, but second of all, twenty-five percent is just not feasible. Um, we'd never have a town meeting. Um. It, it ju, it just wouldn't happen, because if we have, say, four thousand. Registered vote.
Five thousand at this point.
So if we have five thousand, that means we'd have to have twelve-hundred-and-fifty people at the town meeting for it to be called a quorum. And that's just absurd, I've never been, even the most contentious. Uh, you know, the school articles, what do we have, like six hundred-ish?
Yep.
But we've never been close to, uh, twelve-hundred-and-fifty, and I, I just think this is.
The purpose of this may also be to have no town meetings.
Well, that, well, that's true, and so, um, I, 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 I am going to make a motion on a recommendation for this one, but.
Well, I, I have to agree with you on some of the points that you, you made, Tony, uh. That we, we have less than five thousand, I said, I think it's four thousand something, around forty-five hundred or so, uh, as I recall the last number, it could, give or take a couple hundred.
All right, so eleven twenty-five.
But, but I mean, twenty-five percent is much too large, if this had come in and said that they were wanting a quorum, a minimum quorum of one percent. Which would be forty to fifty people, I could end up seeing that as a, a good possibility, you don't want to have, uh, only twenty or thirty people. And most of those are the elected officials or appointed officials voting on something that, that the town, the townspeople should end up being involved in. And that, to me, that we should end up having more, more people.
End up getting involved. I fully agree with that, Will, but you don't know what motivates people to come.
I, I understand that, and it is, with this COVID, it, it makes it even more difficult, but there should be at least a minimum, and I say, like, one, if he had put in there one percent, I'd say, well. You know, I could end up seeing that as a very, very good possibility, so that we don't have, uh, too few people voting on this.
Right, and in fact, at the last town meeting, and we probably pushed one percent. Um, I don't remember exactly how many we had at the last town meeting, but it wasn't a lot.
The only, the only hard thing with any quorum is if you have something important that needs to be. Voted on to keep the town moving forward, and nobody feels like they want to show up, which is their right.
Yep.
And it can really put a stall in general government. Um, I've been at town meetings with no quorum, in different towns, and it just, uh, you're sitting there calling people, trying to get one more person to show up for the meeting. I don't think that, it, sometimes that can really be, even, even the smallest quorum sometimes can hand, handcuff a, uh, administration trying to. Put something important forward that keeps the town, because people aren't always interested, unfortunately.
Well, this, this is, this has come up in other communities, and, uh, those communities have, from time to time, and I say to, from time to time, not always. They have had to take and end up, uh, rescheduling and, or going out, like you, like you said, Tom, to see, uh, additional people to get a, a quorum. Uh, is that a bad thing? Probably, if it, if it was a low number, no, if it is, if it's this number here, uh, that's un, totally unreasonable. Nobody's going to end up trying to take and end up, th, th, this, this, this is much too, too high, I, I, like I said, if it was like one percent, and it was anywhere from forty to sixty people. Then that's, that's a reasonable, uh, number to take and end up having as minimum to take and end up having a town meeting, if we can't, if we cannot get that many people. There's something wrong, period, and that, we, we need to take and end up maybe looking at a different form of government, such as a representative. Town meeting rather than open town meeting, and that would be, to me, would end up being really telltale for the future.
Too much like the Electoral College.
Yep. Um, I would, uh. Like to, to make a motion that the advisory committee recommends against this article. Or votes, recommends a no vote on this article.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any, any further discussion?
I have to agree with Tony has written. We, we can't recommend this.
Deb, anything on the chat?
Uh, no, we're good.
Okay, call the vote, Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, against this article. Okay. Believe that's it for the, uh, articles for, uh. Special town meeting?
Uh, pre-town meeting.
Pre-town meeting?
Uh, make a motion to adjourn pre-town meeting and resume, uh, advisory committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Includes pre-town meeting. Okay, uh, we don't have, uh, too much left on the advisory committee meeting. Um. We've got, uh, old business, anyone have any, uh, old business that, open issues that they'd like to discuss?
Do we, we, did, Tom, did we cover all the other, uh, uh, the other topics, uh, before?
Uh, we did, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll have to, again, I'll have to apologize, I have a, a, I've had a full, the, Dan's calendar here, and I, I, I just can't, you know, I, I was late.
We saw you trying to get on, but we, we knew that you kept getting bumped off, so we knew, we knew you were giving it your best effort.
Well, beside that, I was late beside, because I've, I've got a lot going on.
That's certainly understandable, we all, you know, do the best we can, it's all we can do. Uh, if anyone doesn't have any old business, they don't have any new business they'd like to bring up? Anything on the chat, Deb?
I have one comment, Mr. Chairman, will we be meeting on the twenty-ninth to review, uh, what happened at the special town meeting?
Uh, that's, uh, one of my, uh, thing I'd like to bring up on new business, Will, um, I'd like to see if we, rather than meeting on the twenty-ninth, then the following week, I'd like to, uh. Postpone on the twenty-ninth, because we're meeting again that following Thursday, and we met this Thursday with the pre-town, so rather than meeting the, uh, three Thursdays in a row. If we could, uh, skip the twenty-ninth, I think that would, uh, not impede any of our, uh, decisions we have to make for the, uh, following, it's November, I don't have it in front of me, November fourth, maybe, fifth?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, the fifth.
Yeah.
I know we do have a, a regular scheduled meeting on the fifth, so that would, uh, someone's, I don't think that six, seven days is gonna.
Yeah, you can just, uh, cancel the twenty-ninth meeting, and. I don't think we even have to vote on it, yes, Chairman, you have that discretion.
Correct, I just wanted to bring it up tonight, just to, uh.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Amy, Will, do you, do you have any issues? Okay, um, anyone else have anything, uh, who they'd like to, uh, bring up?
I could just, uh, thank the advisory committee, uh, for my, doing my first, uh, pre-town. New and, uh, appreciate your support.
I would look forward to many more with you.
Thank you.
Adam, congratulation on getting the administrative job.
Thank you, appreciate that, Will.
All right, no one has?
Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Okay, Amy?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes.